Good evening. We welcome you here to our West Valley City Council meeting. We call our meeting to order. We announce that we have a full quorum present. All members of the council are in attendance. Our opening ceremony tonight will be by Councilmember Corey Rushden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad to see we have some scouts here that can help us with our pledge of allegiance. But in further warm-up to that, I would like to recite to you a short poem by Henry Wadsworth Longfellow, American poet, a section from his poem entitled "Building of the Ship", which I think ties in nicely to a pledge of allegiance. And it reads: Thou too sail on, O ship of state, sail on. O union strong and great, Humanity with all its fears, with all the hopes of future years, Is hanging breathless on the fate. We know what master laid the keel, What workmen wrought thy ribs of steel, Who made each mast and sail a rope, With anvil's ring, with hammers' beat, In what forge and with what heat. Were shaped the anchors of thy hope; Fear not each sudden sound and shock, 'Tis of the wave and not the rock. 'Tis but the flapping of the sail And not a rant made by the gale. In spite of rock and tempest roar, In spite of false lights on the shore, Sail on, not fear, to breast of sea; Our hearts and hopes are all with thee. Please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I, United States of America, Thank thee for all who stand One nation, our God, Divided, whole, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have some special recognition. We have two scout groups here tonight, it looks like. I know one is prepared. Our tradition is that we have one of the boys come forward To tell us their troop number, What schools they attend, And what they're working on here tonight. So if you'll be thinking about that, We'll invite you to come forward And take care of that up here to the microphone.
We are Troop 89. Here to learn more about the citizenship and community merit badge And communications merit badge. We come from the schools of Orchard Elementary, Matheson Junior High, Cypress High, West High, And Paradigm.
Wow. Thank you very much. So do you have a young man that's willing to do that from this Cub Scout group?
I'll actually recognize them.
Yeah, might be a bit overwhelming.
Yeah, they're little wolves, eight-year-olds. They go to Taylorsville Elementary, Truman Elementary, And AIS University, I think. And we're from a state, it's a pack of five different units.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate your being here. You're fortunate, you picked a good night. I don't think we'll have a long meeting, But we'll get through our information. Next on our agenda, The approval of the minutes to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of the March 10th regular meeting minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got the motion before us properly. Any discussion? See none, then we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of March 10th? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, We go to our awards ceremonies and proclamations. I just need to get my proper list up here Because our first proclamation is recognizing April of 2015 As Child Abuse Prevention Month. A proclamation recognizing April 2015 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. West Valley City's greatest asset is our children. All children deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment To assure they reach their full potential. And child abuse is a serious problem affecting over 3,700 In the Salt Lake Valley annually. Child abuse respects no racial, religious, Socioeconomic, or geographic boundaries. And all citizens of West Valley City Should become aware of child abuse And its prevention Within their respective communities. And to actively encourage and support parents To raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And decreasing the occurrence of child abuse Depends upon the efforts of each of us In order to make a positive, substantial impact On the children of today, Who will grow to be the leaders of tomorrow. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, Utah, Do hereby proclaim April 2015 As Child Abuse Prevention Month in West Valley City. And call upon our citizens to become aware of the impact of child abuse And join in working for its prevention within our communities. Thank you. Next, we have a second proclamation that Councilman Buehler will present.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proclamation regarding National Service Recognition Day, Which will be April 7th, 2015. Where our service to others is a hallmark of the American character And central to how we meet our challenges. And the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service And volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. Whereas participants in AmeriCorps and Senior Corps Address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation From educating students for the jobs of the 21st century And supporting veterans and military families To providing health services and helping communities recover From natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity By creating more sustainable, resilient communities And providing education, career skills, And leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants Serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, Bolstering civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations That are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas many national service participants of all ages and backgrounds Serve in West Valley City, Providing vital support to city residents And improving the quality of life in our city. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership That invests in community solutions And leverages non-federal resources To strengthen community impact And increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, Dedication, and patriotism By making an intensive commitment To service a community that remains with them In their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service Showed a priority with mayors nationwide To engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities And is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country To recognize the impact of service on Mayor's Day Of recognition for national service on April 7th, 2015. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ron Bigelow And the city council of West Valley City Do hereby proclaim April 7th, 2015 As National Service Recognition Day. And encourage residents to recognize The positive impact of national service in our city. And thank those who serve And to find ways to give back to their communities.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we go to our public comment period. And we have two people who have signed up. We'll invite First O'Kelly Merriman, Okay. Who is with the Family Support Center, Which relates to the Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation we just read.
It does. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for having us here. As you mentioned, my name is Kelly Merriman. And I am the volunteer coordinator for the Family Support Center. Been with them just over two years now. Just so you guys know, this is a very important month, April is, for us, As much as every month is. We are a local nonprofit. And we've been around for 38 years, Working in Salt Lake County, To work on our mission, Protecting children, strengthening families, And preventing child abuse and neglect. Everything we do works around treatment, prevention, and education. And really working to strengthen the family unit And prevent abuse and neglect. Last year alone, as we mentioned in the proclamation, There were 3,725 confirmed substantiated cases of child abuse In Salt Lake County. That's up 300 from 2013. In the entire state of Utah, there was 9,810. In West Valley alone, in 2013, there were 407 abused children. As an agency, we offer a lot of different services That go into the treatment, education, and prevention. One of them is our crisis nurseries. And we have one just down the street at Proust and Ranger High School. We also have one in Sugar House in Midville as well. They are free crisis childcare, 24/7, Up to 72 hours for children ages 0 to 11. And it could be for a parent who needs a stress break, Who has a job interview, a medical emergency, legal obligation, Whatever the case may be, And they need a little support in watching their children. That is what it's for. And our 24/7 location is in West Valley. Last year alone, we served 359 children from West Valley In our crisis nurseries. At our West Valley location alone, We served a total of 995 Of our 2,000 unduplicated counts of children. So that's a lot of children going in and out of our nurseries. And that was about 16,000 hours' worth of care That we provided to those families. Not only do we provide crisis nurseries, But we have free in-home parenting support, Education programs, A transitional housing unit for single mothers, And low and reduced cost mental health services For anyone in the county. So on behalf of the Family Support Center, I just want to say thank you for continuing this tradition. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. There's a lot that goes on. We'd like to invite you to our annual stroller walk For child abuse prevention. It happens on April 11th, Just over at our Taylorsville office. We've got some chalk art for the kids And some fun, different themes. And thank you for your support, As well as the national service one. I just want to thank you on behalf of me As an AmeriCorps Vista along member And someone who manages volunteers on a daily basis And works with a lot of other volunteer coordinators. Thank you for supporting national service.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Paul Nichols. If you would come forward.
My name is Paul Nichols. I've resided in West Valley City since 1956. I live on 4100 South. And the roads, the traffic is getting terrible. It's past. I complained here last November, And it's felt worse since then. And you can't hardly, three, four times a day, You can't even get out of my driveway to the traffic. Morning, noon, and at night. Is there anything you can do about it? They've got side streets showing that a little flash of signs Saying how fast you're going. Can't they get something on 4100 To say how fast you're going?
Just so you're aware, the time is yours And we won't interrupt you.
Okay, well, that's what I'll...
We'll keep track of the questions.
Yeah.
We'll answer you afterwards, unless you're through.
Well, I'm through. It's like hollering before. Nothing's been done. We had to send it to go 41 miles an hour, the average. I don't know if that's forward or backward. But it's surely 41 miles an hour forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now I believe that that was all that were here for public comment. That's all we did.
I'm late.
Okay, you've signed up. Why don't you come on up? We'll get that from you in just a moment. And then we'll respond to...
Could you talk me to Ann Steed?
Sure. Thank you. George Edwards.
My name is George Edwards. I live in the Diamond Summit subdivision, 6200 South, 56 West. In a roundabout kind of way, To get my point, One of the reasons that so many people Go right through the school zones, Right through the crosswalks Is because we have little flashing yellow lights. Back in the day, The only ones that had those were tow trucks, The high-power line workers, And maybe an ambulance. Every waterworks, every construction vehicle, everyone out there has it. It's called learned ignorance. We learn to ignore it. So when we have these crosswalks, We just ignore these flashing yellow lights. Now, the reason I bring this up Is because someone decided, at some point, To put one of those police signs that say 25 miles an hour With red and blue flashing lights. And if there's one way to get us to ignore red and blue flashing lights, That is the way to start us on that path. Make it so that it is so common, We just ignore it and block it out. As for these crosswalks, The only thing that I have seen that comes close to taking care of the problem Is not very far from where I live in Kearns, On 6200. On demand, push the button, And the traffic light engages. Little flashing lights don't work. And that's supposed to be a safe route for our schools. And we don't even have crossing guards there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. With that then, Our public comments will now close. We'll turn to our city manager. Any comments, Mr. Powell?
Thanks, Mayor. I wasn't planning on making any commentary, But maybe I could just take a short moment. It's interesting to have the two gentlemen here Tonight's podium basically talking about the same Kind of an issue of traffic safety. And also sort of illustrating the fact that Many times what we had to deal with from a governmental standpoint, Both you as elected officials, Both us as staff, including Public Works, including police, Are really frankly, a lot of different ideas How to deal with the same problem. Some of them effective, some of them temporarily effective, Some of them ineffective. But I guess what I could say here Is we certainly do, over time, Attempt to address and address the community's concerns in these areas. Mr. Nichols, for example, I know, Has been contacted with and spoken with the police department On a number of occasions. I certainly would disagree with him That there's fast traffic on 4100 South. There certainly is, and there's more of it As development occurs within the city. I'm certainly, from the staff standpoint, Not opposed to examining and putting up even, As we have in other areas. I'm not sure how the speed signs, you know, work On a much more major thoroughfare such as 4100 South. But we can certainly look into that. But then, as the other gentleman that stood up there pointed out, Maybe not, that's not always the best solution to the problem either. Although, you know, his very own neighborhood Is the one that came and asked us to do that As in addition to some other measures That we did throughout other areas in Diamond Summit. Not necessarily specific to school zone crossing, But traffic issues throughout that area as well. So I'm not really actually proposing Or naysaying any of the discussion or solutions That we proposed tonight. Just maybe making a general sort of comment on This is certainly an issue we struggle with all the time And try to get better at all the time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. To the council for any comments. I will make just a couple of comments. One, certainly we support the Family Support Center And appreciate the work that they do. As far as 4100 South, We've had a number of discussions. The great challenge there is that A lot of that traffic is not West Valley City traffic, A fair share of it is, But a lot of through traffic as well. And that will only continue to grow. We keep building homes, and the valley keeps expanding, And a lot more people are going to move out here. And we haven't found a good solution Other than, you know, just general traffic enforcement, Which could be done occasionally. And we'll continue that around the city. The other thing is, certainly in school zones, Again, that comes down to if it's habitually violated, You know, our police officers do come around. Certainly, I think that that's an emphasis that they should consider. That's perhaps the most... Not diminishing any other speeding anywhere else, But certainly in a school zone Is a very serious issue That we want to address. But again, based upon resources And that that we have. It's always easy to ask for new programs, But it's much harder to come up with the money to enforce those. You know, the solution would be on 4100 South. There's just a couple of policemen there all the time. But, you know, realistically, that's not the solution. So we'll just do the best we can And see what the city can do to have an impact there. And certainly encourage your feedback over time. Continue to come back and let us know how that goes. And same with the school zones, If there's anything that can be done. With that anyway, Let's move on to our agenda. That concludes all of the comment period. We have a public hearing. This is regarding application SV-1-2015. This is a request to vacate John Henry Drive, Which is 2365 South, 2570 West. This is at a street that is a dead end. It does not have a turnaround area. It was given to the city, Dedicated to the city by one of the companies there Because we thought there would be development and access At the end of that street. As it turns out, that has never occurred. A new company has come in there. They have taken all of that property and do not need the access. And in order to have better security and so forth, They have requested that that street be eliminated. And since we can eliminate a street, A little bit of the snow plowing and street sweeping, We have agreed to that. And so the recommendation is that that be vacated And returned to that location Where it was originally a part of. That is the issue before us. Anything else we ought to add to that? Okay. Then we will declare open Our public comment period. And we will now accept public input Regarding this application SV-1-2015. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue? Seeing no takers, Then we will close the public comment portion Of this application. That is now closed. So we will now turn to ordinance number 15-12. This is our city process For actually creating the documentation To vacate John Henry Drive. I would note, for those of you who are visiting us tonight, This is the second time that the council has addressed this. These items and everything on our agenda Are all addressed one week prior To their final resolution here in the city council meeting. So last week, in our early study session, We talked about ask questions. Were able to get familiar with these issues. So if we don't ask a lot of questions, This is actually the second time it's come before us. And we wait a week, at least, to take official action. And we will likely take official action On many of these items here tonight. With that, to the council then, For ordinance number 15-12.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 15-12.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have our second before us. We got those properly. Any comments or discussion? Councilman Rushton.
Thank you, Mayor. A few years ago, We took similar action vacating a street named Tecumseh Drive. And I made these comments. I'll make the same ones now. Tecumseh is a strong native American name, Also middle name of General Sherman. And now we're vacating John Henry Drive, Which is another strong, sturdy American name. I would just hope that, sure, economic development Has a master list of street names. And when a developer comes into our city Looking to name a subdivision Or name a street a certain name, That we would let them know that these are available And ready to be put back into good use. As I mentioned, they're good, strong, sturdy American names That are well-suited And identify well with the character of our city.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion? Seeing no further comment, let's place it for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance number 15-12 Vacating all of John Henry Drive? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The ordinance is approved. We now go to resolutions on our agenda. And we have several of those. We will start with Resolution 15-51. This is to authorizing the city To enter an agreement with Extonet Systems And Centennial Management Group For the design, installation, and operation Of a distributed network at the Maverick Center. This will provide stronger Wi-Fi there. There's a fairly routine thing done at most large venues for people. And this is to authorize the city to enter into that agreement. With that introduction, to the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 15-51.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second? The motion is properly before us. Further discussion? Councilman Vincent.
Mayor, just make a comment. You know, we talked about whether this was really needed or not. This last week, I was at a basketball game at the university, Actually gymnastics meeting at the University of Utah. And I heard several people comment That they were trying to access the basketball game that was going on. And because the Wi-Fi signal was so bad, They couldn't see if Utah was winning their basketball game. They were pretty upset. So I do think that there is a place to boost these levels And give patrons an experience that they want.
Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving Resolution 15-51 Authorizing the city to enter an agreement With Extonet Systems and Centennial Management Group For Wi-Fi? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. We now go to Resolution 15-52. This is to approve a franchise agreement With Wireless Beehive and West Valley City For telecommunications network in the city. These are fairly routine. We already have eight companies. This gives them authority To work in our city on these telecommunications networks. With that information, I believe that Is those are in, under, around, Along, over, and across, present, From future rights away in West Valley City. And that's for a period of 10 years. That's the introduction. To the council then, For any comments or action. Councilman Rushton.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 15-52.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We got those. The motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving Resolution 15-52 To approve a franchise agreement Between the city and Wireless Beehive? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. We now go to Resolution 15-53, Which authorizes the city To enter to a master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement With US Bancorp With respect to the purchase and replacement Of police and fire radio equipment. And this will be a contract for $182,560. This lease purchase agreement Is our standard method of purchasing these items Over a period of time So that we can spread the cost out. And with that then, introduction to the council.
Motion to approve Resolution 15-53.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The motion is before us. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we'll place that resolution for a vote. All in favor of approving Resolution 15-53 Entering into a lease purchase agreement With US Bancorp for police and fire radio equipment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. We now go to Resolution 15-... We now go to resolution 15-54, which will be very similar, but it is separate. And this is to authorize the purchase, not the lease, but for the city to purchase this radio equipment for the police and fire department. And so this is related to our previous one, but need both of them in order to properly get it done. Then to the council.
Motion to approve resolution 15-54.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The motion is properly before us. Do we have any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 15-54, authorizing the purchase of the police and fire department radio equipment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. And then we come to our last resolution, 15-55. This is to accept a storm drainage easement and grant of temporary construction easement for property at 2570 West, 2365 South. And these are fairly routine and common in the city to have these. So, to the council then, for action or comment.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 15-55.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. That's properly before us. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 15-55, accepting a storm drainage easement and a grant of temporary construction easement, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. We do not, I believe, have a need for an executive session. Unless there are any further comments from the council, that concludes our business for the evening. And with that, there's one final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passed unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.